Where's Peter?
I don't know. Um, can we, uh, well, I'll start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen to order. Mr. Tropiano, may I have a roll call, please?
Uh, well, it's hard to say. I saw a few people here a minute ago, but I see Peter. There he is. Okay. Uh, okay, so we have, uh, one, two, three. Mr. Menez isn't here. Where is he?
He is. He's in the waiting room, so he's here.
So why don't we wait till he gets in here?
Okay.
Before we do the roll call, okay? And I believe I saw, um,
Slaven.
Alice, Mrs. Slaven, uh, sort of, uh, on one of the things. So she must be here somewhere. He must be.
Yes, he's, he's here, and he's actually attending another meeting at the same time, which is why they're signed in. And when he needs to be present at this meeting, he will turn over to this meeting.
Well, okay.
None. What can I tell you?
That's a new one.
Well, that's a new one because I really can't do that. He's either here or he isn't. And, uh, he'll have to be checked in when he comes on.
Right, that's fine.
So right now, can we get Mr. Menez into the room here?
I asked for that.
There we go. Okay, so so far there, four Selectmen present, Town Administrator and Town Account, Town Council are all here.
May you tell me who's absent?
Uh, right now, it's Alan Slaven, but, uh, I can tell that he may be around.
Okay. Good evening, Jim. Nice to see you. Uh, let's see. I would like to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Menez, could you lead us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Announcements? Uh, let's see. Mr. Titlebaum?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Menez?
Um.
Announcements?
Announcements, announcements. Yes, um, a lot of openings in town departments. Please take a look. Um. Any of the citizens out there, people you know looking for jobs, um, it seems to be a difficult time for recruiting for everyone, including the town. Um, in addition, uh, take a look at the committees page if, um, you're not interested in working. Uh, thank you. That's all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes, there. Believe it or not, I do not have a single one.
Goodness me. Okay, I do have one. Let me see if I can find it. Uh, the Onset Bay Center is offering, um, monthly programs with the Council on Aging. On June fifteenth at nine AM at the Onset Bay, um, location, there's a kayak tour. On July thirteenth, learn to shellfish. August seventeenth, uh, a sailing trip, and charts and knot tying, that's a good one, on September fourteenth. Please look at either the Buzzers Bay Coalition page or look at the, um, seniors, um, Council on Aging page. And space is limited, so five oh eight nine 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 six three six three, extension two two seven, to register for this. Um, I think it's a great partnership between the Buzzers Bay Coalition and the Council on Aging. We just want to thank everybody.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, let's see, citizens' comments.
Should be good. Let's see.
I see one hand that I will not recognize, and I don't see any others.
All right then, moving on.
Move on to board's comments, please. Let's see, Mr. Tu, uh, Mr. Menez?
Um. I'll pass. I'll make it easy tonight.
Oh, thank you. You got the message. Mr. Mr. Titlebaum?
Uh, nothing except to say that town meeting is coming up next month. Uh, we're only about two and a half weeks out, so people should start thinking about attending and, uh, having their voices heard.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, neither do I. Item number seven, appointments, reappointments and interviews. We have none.
None.
No licenses and permits, so under item nine, town business, but we have a COVID nineteen update, Mr. Sullivan.
He's muted.
He's hiding.
Look how good he still looks, huh?
I know.
All these years and he still looks the same.
Sorry, I'm getting some stuff out. Didn't know he still had that on the agenda.
Oh.
I think you're good.
Oh, all set?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, the next item, Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah, I move that we ratify the hiring of Kathy Frey as a seasonal launch operator position.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tropiano, and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion? I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Menez?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you. Could we have Cory Blanchard? Enter, please, who will be presenting.
The Dog Park?
The Dog Park, yes, sir. I'm gonna get a report on the Wareham Dog Park.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great. Could you introduce yourself and let us know what you're here for?
Sure. Uh, my name is Cory Blanchard, and I am the President of the Dog Park Affiliation of Wareham. Um, so we are raising funds and working towards bringing a dog park to town.
Excellent. Did you recently get some very good news?
Yes, so we had submitted our grant, um, application to the Stanton Foundation, and we were recently approved to move forward with the, um, design portion of the grant. Um, so we were awarded twenty-two thousand dollars, um, roughly to start beginning the, um, design process and the final design, um, quote, an estimate for building the park.
Okay. Any questions from, um, let's see, Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions?
Well, this goes back a long ways, uh, at least five years, um, possibly to twenty fifteen. Um, no, this is great, and, you know, I, I know the town had, had offered the land, uh, off Maple Springs Road, uh, so getting money for the design is great. Uh, how are your other fundraising efforts coming along? And what do you have plans coming out of COVID?
Yep, so we're doing great. We have, um, over the last couple of years, we've raised about twenty thousand dollars that we have set aside for any overage costs that aren't covered by the grant and the CPC funding that we have, um, uh, been allocated. And, um, fundraising this year, we have several events that we're going to do. We are currently running a monthly can drive where we're taking canned bottle and plastic donations, um, that we are doing redemptions for, along with, um, our project runway that was a big, uh, hit prior to COVID, and our calendar contest that was also a big hit, um, during COVID, because it's a one that we can do while social distancing. It's all online. Um, we are also volunteering June twelfth with the Make Piece Triathlon to, um, raise some funds as well, um, for donating bodies to assist in the, um, direction of the triathlon and helping the, the athletes while they participate.
Great, well, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Menez?
Um, how do you, how do you, um, run your can collection?
So each month, we have, um, a posted date and time that we'll be collecting. Um, it's a little bit different than last year, so this year, we have a set day and time versus just having a drop-off station. Um, the cans don't have to be counted. They can just be put in bags, but our bottles, um, and glass have to be separated out, and those, we just ask that, um, participants count because we don't have a machine that automatically counts those. Um, so some people have been dropping off where they're not pre-counted, which is fine. Um, and we have volunteers that are assisting, um, with counting and collecting and then redeeming, um, the cans each month.
And, and where can people find out this information?
Um, so we have it on our Facebook page. Uh, we have a, a monthly event that, um, we post, and then if they follow us on our Dog Park page or our, um, Wareham Dog Park group, we also post, um, each month before it happens, um, to make sure that everyone is aware of the dates and times, and we did, um, have to switch around due to a rain date, uh, last month, so we, we post all of that information on our Facebook.
Thank you. When is your next event, Cory?
Uh.
Or your next drop-off time?
Uh, let me check. I can tell you that. It's June. Let me double-check here. Sorry, I should have.
Excuse me, Mr. Menez, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I got, I got a whole lot of those bottles and cans.
Yeah, well, we'll take them. So the next one is uh, June nineteenth from eleven to one, and the drop-off location is, um, twelve Shaker Ave in, um, Wareham.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Menez, you have a, I just cut you off, I apologize.
Facebook address?
Um, so the main page is, um, the Dog Park Affiliation of Wareham, and then we also have a group called the Wareham Dog Park, which is more of a social, um, for local dog owners to chat and, um,
Thank you.
and communicate there.
Excellent.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
I, I really don't have anything to say. I'm glad it's coming along and, uh,
Me too.
Keep going, charge.
Thank you.
My only comments would be that, um, I'm, I'm really pleased for you that you've gotten this grant. I know that you had benchmarks that you had to reach in timeframes, and you were very, very well organized. You wanted something, and you figured out how to get it done. So that's great.
We appreciate all the town's support in it as well, and it's been a big group effort with all of our volunteers and all the events, so we, we appreciate the town and, and everyone that's been involved throughout the process.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, no? Anybody have any other comments? Nope. Okay. Cory, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A nice evening.
You too.
The next item would be D, Mr. Tropiano?
You see, um, Selectman Slaven doing this?
He hasn't really, yeah.
Not really yet.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it looks like two zombie giraffes joining.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, the special vote to appro, to approve the opt-out and reduction fee application for curbside billing FY twenty-one. Now, we have a whole little thing here from, uh, from, uh, Mr. Menard, and it literally has, uh, a list of people and the amounts and so on and so forth. And let's see, I'll get to the bottom line and say.
Seventeen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah, it's, uh, it actually, I've got, here we go. I gotta find the bottom line here, just seventeen thousand, four ninety. Very good.
Thank you. Is that your motion, sir?
She did my stuff on both sides.
Oh.
Makes, it's a little difficult to work with like this, so.
Okay.
But anyway, so that's it, yeah. So the abatement is, uh, it will be seventeen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, and I moved that we approved it.
Excuse me, it's a fee application reduction.
Actually.
It's not, uh, not an abatement.
Um, okay, it says, uh, bait, it says, uh, baitment on the, on the thing from Mr. Menard.
No, it was incorrectly worded.
That's correct.
Okay, so what is the proper wording you want to use?
Reduction in.
I would just, I would just, uh, make the motion the way it says on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Prove the opt-out and reduction fee applications totaling seventeen thousand, four ninety.
All right, so, um, I move that we approve the opt-out and reduction fee application for curbside billing for FY twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion? No, then I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Menez?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so four zero zero. The next item on the agenda, um, could we let Erica and Justin Kennedy in, please?
Hi, how are you all this evening?
Good. All right, do you have someone with you that we should be letting into?
New attorney Phil Mackey.
Okay.
Also have our compliance officer, Evan Forsythe on the call, if you'd.
Okay, so Mr. Mackey is M A C C H I?
Correct.
And Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
I don't see him.
And we also have our Director of Operations on the call, Bill Silver.
Okay, are they on, I don't. I don't see them.
There we go.
There we go.
Oh, okay. Are you all set then, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. Okay. Um, good evening, and could you, um, introduce yourselves and tell us what you're looking for?
Absolutely. My name is Erica Kennedy.
My name is Justin Kennedy.
And we are looking to open discussions and potentially have a vote with the Board of Selectmen to open negotiations for host community agreements.
If I may, Madam Chairman?
Please.
Um, Phil Mackey, 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 twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, uh, Councilman on behalf of the applicant. Um, as you've already talked to Erica and Justin, they're, they're, uh, I believe longtime Wareham, possibly multi-generation residents. Um, they are the primary or principals of DB Delivery MA, as well as the Social Equity Partners. Um, I'm here as their legal counsel. Evan Forsythe is their compliance officer, and Bill Silver is the Director of Operations. You may not actually need to hear from any of us, but we figured we would have everyone here to answer any questions. Um, my part of this is actually fairly, fairly brief. Um, we submitted, uh, business plan, the ownership disclosure, the use and site authorization for Three Tow Road, um, I believe last week in anticipation of this meeting, and as far as I know, that is what's required at this point. Um, as Erica has said, we're looking for your positive considerations to open negotiations. Um, and I believe that's when the, the devil gets into the details, but, uh, the business plan is fairly comprehensive. Um, again, as I mentioned, we're looking at a site, the Free Tow Road, as far as primarily a delivery business. I would like to emphasize that this is not a storefront that people walk into. It is not meant to be open to the public per se. Um, conjunctively with the delivery, we would also ask, we'll be looking for permission to cultivate and manufacture, and at least at this point, when we're discussing manufacturing, it is not a mechanized machine process. It is taking, um, the leaves and actually rolling them into product. Um, so it, it's still classified as manufacturing. It's a different HCA, and, uh, something for your board to consider, but that is the scope of what we're looking for at this point. Um, we believe that the site is appropriately zoned. We think honestly that, uh, this project will improve the, the area, at least aesthetically. It will be screened completely from public view. Um, if you've been in the area lately, uh, you, you know it, well, you know what the site looks like. Um, and, uh, we would submit that, uh, a, at the end of this, we are looking for a win for the town of Wareham. We're looking clearly for a win for Erica and Justin, and it is their intention, especially of their residents, to be longtime corporate residents of, of the town as well. Um, and so I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can go through the business plan, but, uh, I would, uh, leave that to your direction, Madam Chair, and take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Menez, do you have any questions for Mr. Mackey or for the Kennedys?
Uh, general, um, this retail delivery or wholesale transportation?
Retail delivery.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any others, Mr. Menez?
No, no, I, I went through the packet and.
Okay, great.
Quite extensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions of any of the presenters?
No, I don't, not at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Um, actually, um, we are looking, or you are looking for three separate HCA agreements. One for the retail delivery, one for the cultivation, and one for the manufacturing, if I'm hearing correctly.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, are there any other questions from the board or any comments? Do any of you have any questions of us?
Other than please vote yes, no, we do not.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll accept a motion. Actually, I think I would accept three separate motions. I think it's cleaner that way.
All right, discussion, okay. Uh, let's see, how am I gonna do this? Let's do it this way. Um, I move that we authorize the town administrator and the town planner to begin negotiations for a host community agreement, or agreements with DB Delivery Mass, LLC DBA Doobie, Three Tow Road, Wareham. So that's the delivery portion, right?
It, yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion? I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Menez?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
It's myself, yes. Four zero zero. Thank you for the delivery.
Okay, so, um, then I, that's for the delivery, and then the other is for manufacturing, and I move that we authorize the town administrator and the town planner to begin negotiations for host community agreement or agreements with, um, DB Delivery, not delivery, I'm sorry. Um,
It actually is.
It is actually DB Delivery. It's the same corporate name.
Oh, is it the same name, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. That's funny. That's, that's interesting. So that's cool. Mass LLC DB Doobie, right? Is it Doobie? Is that how you say it? Okay. Uh, Three Tow Road for a manufacturing agreement.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Titlebaum seconded? Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Menez?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero.
All right, and, uh, the same thing I said before, only this, only this, I want to make it. I want to make it, uh, uh, manufacturing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any further discussion on that motion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Mr. Menez?
Yes.
Mr. T, Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero zero. Begin to negotiate.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and nice to meet all of you, and thank you for your presentation, and thank you for a very, very thorough reading packet.
We appreciate you time, taking the time to look it over. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks, take care.
Okay. Um, now we're going to have Mr. and Mrs. Go, Goins, Janelle and Aaron Goins in to the meeting, please. And if you have someone else with you, would you let me know who it is, and we'll let them in as well? Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening. How you doing?
Do you have someone else with you?
Uh, yes, our lawyer as well, Blake Messing, Mensing.
Blake Messing, Blake Messing. We'll wait for him to be let in, please. There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Janelle. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Um, why don't you introduce yourselves? Tell us what you're looking for, and do the spiel and introduce whoever is here to speak on your behalf, please.
Uh, sure, I'll talk. I'm Aaron Goins, uh, CEO and co-founder of the Emerald Turtle, along with my wife, Janelle Goins, uh, co-founder and, uh, COO of the Emerald Turtle, and we are here, uh, praying and hoping for a positive vote on a delivery operator, uh, HCA, a product manufacturing HCA, and a tier-six cultivation HCA.
I apologize. I've been mispronouncing your name.
Uh, listen.
I think we all have.
All life, uh, Goins.
Goins, thank you for correcting us. Uh, Janelle, would you choose to say anything?
Um, again, Janelle Goins, um, I'm COO, co-founder of the Emerald Turtle, and, um, we're, right now, we've already, I think we've given all of the, uh, items that we need to in order to get our HCA, so we're just waiting to hopefully answer any questions that you have, so we can be voted to get started with our applications, because they're coming out now.
Thank you. Mr. Messing? Mensing?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I had a, a great couple of conversations, uh, with Mr. Buckland and Mr. Sullivan, where we went into the nitty-gritty of some of the provisions in the proposed contracts. Um, I believe we've addressed everything that, that they raised, um, and the documents, I, I believe you have before you are, are in a state that my clients are prepared to, to sign, uh, if we're fortunate enough to get the green light from this board.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from board members? Um, Mr. Menez?
Um, this is for retail delivery, correct?
Uh, it's a wholesale delivery operator license, so it's a separately named, uh, license type by the Canada's Control Commission. Uh, as Aaron alluded to, the commission is releasing the application for that any day now, um, and that would entitle them uh, to buy at wholesale from other licensed cultivators or manufacturers, uh, put it in a warehouse that they already have, and, and obviously a product vault, uh, and deliver to anyone, uh, in the municipality that's essentially opted in to receiving at-home delivery.
Okay, so it's, it's wholesale, but you'll be doing retail delivery to the end user?
Yeah, uh, it's, it's, the, the word retail is just, is not part of the, the regulatory language, but yes, it is a transaction that would occur at someone's home upon proof of age and majority, uh, and residence, uh, in a municipality that allows that to occur, uh, within its borders. So yes, and then it would be subject to the, uh, three percent, uh, adult-use retail tax, though again, the commission does not, uh, call it a retail license for purposes of the, uh, limit on retail licenses that one entity may acquire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Uh, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Well, the only question I have is when, when this came in front of us to authorize the negotiations, we had some concerns and questions about, um, when we were going to town meeting, and how we were gonna set this up in order to have these licenses, and I thought we were gonna wait until after town meeting before we started giving these licenses out.
So if I may, Madam Chair, I reviewed, reviewed the town meeting warrant article. Uh, even if we're to pass it, it really shouldn't have an impact on your board's ability to, uh, authorize the host community agreement.
No, I'm not saying it is. I just thought that we wanted to wait. That was my opinion at the last meeting, that we were going to wait until after town meeting.
Mr. Tropiano, I think if I remember, um, that, that was one of the thoughts, and there was also thought that, uh, the Goins, um, have been around for a while on this one.
I knew that, too.
Yeah, not to, not to hold them up, and even if we were to put a limit, we have, uh, you know, they, they would have been first in line, so.
Okay.
I don't see this being a negative impact.
All right, that's, that's fine, as long as, so they'd be one of the three, I guess, if that's how we.
I guess if I'm saying something nice, I can, I can butcher your name. I apologize.
Well, you know, we all know that this is a must-do, because otherwise, we wouldn't get the revenue, and somebody would deliver from outside to us. Um, even though I'm not crazy about it, I think deliver, I, I, I don't like them delivering alcohol. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and it's, it's sort of a bad deal as far as I'm concerned, but, uh, you know, it's sort of something where we're stuck with, and, uh, you know, we're gonna have to go forward with, and, uh, so as long as you're happy with this, Derek, and, and everybody else, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. The only question I have for you is, um, there are actually two buildings on the location. You have on one place in your application, Nine Little Brook Road and Ten Little Brook Road. Nine doesn't exist according to the assessor's office, so you're gonna have to be careful to make sure that your application doesn't mention, I can't remember where it is, Mr. Mensing, but it was someplace in there.
Yeah, I believe ten is, Ten Little Brook is the only address that I've ever, uh, had in my head, so I, I don't know if the nine was just a typo, but certainly if the address doesn't exist.
Yeah, but there are actually two buildings, and so I guess my question would be if I could. Yeah, but there are actually two buildings, and so I guess my question would be, if I could, um, which, which of the buildings, or both of the buildings, are you going to be using it for which portion, if you don't mind?
Sure.
There's the bigger, there's the long skinny one, and then there's the smaller one.
The smaller one, we actually aren't sure at the moment. Um, if we end up expanding, we will probably have to expand in order to do cult- cultivation. So we aren't decided if that building, you know, if we would build something else where that building is, or we use that building, but the main building, the large building will be where we'll be doing delivery, and all of our main offices out of right now, and manufacturing.
Yeah, and Aaron or Janelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't think there are separate unit numbers for those two buildings, it's just one singular address.
That's correct.
Yes. So you're not gonna cultivate right now? They're not gonna cultivate?
We are, but that's just a longer process, getting the application through, your build out, all the approvals, so it would open later.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? I'll accept a motion. Actually, I'll wait for three motions.
Uh, yeah, okay, here we go. I move, we, uh, approve the host community agreement for Emerald Turtle Cove Management Company LLC, ten Little Brook Road, uh, for a marijuana wholesale delivery operation.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made by Mr. Troppiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, is there any further discussion on the motion? I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Troppiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero.
I move, we approve, I move, we approve the host community agreement for Emerald Turtle Cove Management Company LLC, ten Little Brook Road for a tier six marijuana cultivator.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Troppiano and the second with Mr. Titlebaum, any further discussion on the motion? And I'll go for a roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Troppiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero.
Move, we authorize a host community agreement for Emerald Turtle Cove Management, um, LLC, ten Little Brook Road, marijuana, for a matronic product manufacturer.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Troppiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, is there any further discussion on the motion? I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Troppiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. And you're all set?
Yay!
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, and again, it's nice to welcome new business to the town, and I promise I will pronounce your name as Goins.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Um, we, next on the agenda, Mr. Troppiano?
Next is the discussion and possible vote for CPC articles for Swiss Beach Playground Project.
Mr. Sullivan, do you have somebody else that you want in? To the meeting?
No, I don't think invite Kathy to this, I, I don't think so, so.
I can look.
Yeah, I was, I was looking, so I think this was just the confirmatory vote over what we, we went over.
Yeah, that's, I think it was, we can, we have to confirm it, because it wasn't on the agenda last time around.
Right.
Okay, you want me to do it?
Please.
I move, we, we authorize the, uh, town administrator to go to CPC for funding for the Swiss Beach Playground Project.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Troppiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, is there any further discussion? I will call for roll call.
Excuse me.
Right, sir.
Do we want to, um, mention any amount?
Mr. Sullivan?
We added for the $250,000, I believe, from that. I can check my notes, but that's what I remember from last week.
Yeah, it was like two forty eight, change.
Two fifty, so, uh, I'll add that to my motion, 250,000.
Do you add that to your second, Mr. Titlebaum? Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Munees?
No.
Okay, thank you, roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Troppiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Sullivan, as well as the woman, whose name I can't remember right now, but who did so much work, work for this.
Yeah, don't thank me, Ms. Patalotto has done the, she's done the lion's share of the, the work. I, I did my typical and got in the way, so.
What's nice is, um, there was an article in the newspaper the other day about taking down the old stuff which needed to come down, so thank you to municipal maintenance and you to getting that done. Um, it's, again, it's a compliment to the people who wanted to get this done, and who put their energy and their efforts into getting it done, so thank you. Um, I'm going to postpone the discussion and the possible vote of the assignments and reassignments of the late liaisons, because I haven't been able to speak with each one of you about your individual, if you want changes. So we'll go to, um, item K, which is a statement of goals for short term and long term from each member of the board. I have Mr. Slavin's list, which I can read into the record, I'm not sure he's gonna be able to attend.
Um, Madam Chair, do we need to make a motion to go beyond the hour of ten? With that list?
I said eight o'clock, and I meant it. So, no. What did I do with it? Okay, uh, Mr. Titlebaum, why don't you begin?
Good.
Oh.
Uh, well, continue to work with town council on some of the litigation stuff. Uh, I would say is both short and long term. Uh, I think we need to start thinking about a bylaw review in the short term. About that time again.
Yeah. Those are your goals, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Munees?
Um, yeah, I'd like to see some, some public workshops on, on goals, um, what we want, uh, or that they want related to the town, uh, use of properties, and, 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 you know, similar, um, discussion, so that it's separate from the board meeting. So we'd address, you know, individual issues or, or, um, topics, and, and have, you know, a forum for that. Um, that would be an us thing, of course. And, um, I'd like to see a little more, um, coordination between the, um, various committees, um, you know, and that includes us again. Um, I, I think, uh, we used to do that somewhat on Saturdays occasionally. And, um, I don't know if you call them workshops or whatever. Um, a lot of disconnect. And, um, I would say for number three is continue to work on our webpage and our processes within the, um, the town. To to streamline them and, and make them efficient, more efficient than they are. Um, and I would say those, th- those are three goals, um, which are broad in a sense, but, um, far-reaching, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troppiano?
Okay, so, uh, I would like to see by the end of this, uh, year, which ends in May for us, um, I'd like to see the, uh, and, and get the police station off to, uh, a start. Uh, it's very important to me, and I think we should, uh, accelerate it as quick as possible, and get it off and running, and, uh, whatever it's gonna take, we gotta make it happen, and that's, that's what I wanna see happen. Secondly, I would like to see that, uh, and I will need county council's help for this, but I think it's time to force the issue with the water districts to get the numbers so that we can change to water rates. And, uh, that's probably gonna require some legal, uh, wrangling with the districts, and if that's what it is, that's what it's gonna be. It's public information, and, and we're gonna have to deal with it. Um, because, uh, you know, they, they've been having conversations about another method, uh, which I'm not too crazy about, I'm not gonna mention it, because I don't wanna get anybody excited, but, um, it's, uh, we really need to get to the point where, you remember, now how long ago did we set them free to, to, to get this done with the two districts? And it just hasn't happened, and it's not the fault of the commissioners. They are just up against the wall constantly with the districts. And we, we've got to come to a resolution, and we've gotta make this happen, because it's, you know, it's fair and equitable, and what's fair and equitable is a good thing. The next thing I would like to see this board do, and this would be a short-term thing for, I'd like to see the board, and, and this was not my idea, believe it or not, this came to me from somebody on, um, online. And they made a suggestion that the selectmen visit each district, each of our, our precincts, and literally have a day when we could, uh, meet them, and have people come and, uh, have conversation with some of our, our, our folks, and I'd like to see that happen, I think that's a heck of an idea, that we could go out into the community for, for once in a while. You know, we can't really talk to anybody here, because we don't have time, and we don't, you know, whatever. But we could if we went out to the district and we all said, okay, we're gonna go to the district, we're gonna be at this location on such and such a date, and people could talk to us in each of the precincts, I think that would be a heck of an idea, and I'd like to see the board kind of move in that direction. I know it's, I know it's tedious, and I know it's ten- tentative, because you're gonna get a lot of people that are gonna be there for bad reasons, but you'll also get a lot of people who they're, they're good reasons. And I hate to blow off the good people that go there for a good reason, okay, that have legitimate stuff that we can deal with and, and solve and resolve, because there are some people that are, you know, looney tunes, so let's call it. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's just my idea, so those are my ideas, uh, going forward for this year, and we'll see how we can move along.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin's list is a community center combined with a senior center. Finding a use or reuse for the Boys and Girls Club um, function. We need to find a replacement, um, for what the Boys and Girls Club was, was giving to the community, but we also have the issue of the building. He's going to continue to work on the commuter rail. He hopes that the Greer property sails through all permitting processes. Uh, working for a gated crossing for the railroad tracks behind the merchant's way, so that if eventually there's a boardwalk, that, that would be a safe crossing. And mine, um, I guess I can really sum it up in one or two things. I'm, I, I really am focused in on providing programs that were previously provided by the Boys and Girls Club, and I wanna work on that. I want to make sure that the legal issues that we have had before us are, you know, taken care of, and that was mentioned by at least one of you. The other thing I really think that we need to think about is sustainability. If we build the Taj Mahal, we have to pay to heat the Taj Mahal, and we have to pay to maintain it. And we have to recognize that any building that we build has a cost associated to it. I think that's one of the things that we need to be more maybe blunt, or maybe we need to explain it more to the citizens of the town. Um, we all have great ideas, and we have wishes, we have needs, um, and we have hopes, but we have to have them in a sustainable fashion. So that would be my list. Now, surprise, not next week, but the week after, I want your goals and ideas on a piece of paper, and I want you to submit to me, so that we'll put it on the agenda in two weeks. How are you going to accomplish some of these goals or wishes? And, you know, how far along in the process you are in, for instance, Mr. Troppiano, we're working on a twenty-year project with the police station, and so moving that along, you might have a timeframe, you might be able to tell us, you know, where it's been, how it's gotten there, and where it's going, that kind of thing.
Twenty years, I think it's been thirty years. There's three, kind of, three committees we have established over the course of years, and, uh, two of them were sunsetted, and this is the last one. And by the way, Claire chaired every single one of them, and, uh, you know, I can't imagine that she wants to chair a fourth.
No, I'm not saying she wants to, yeah, so do you understand what I'm asking of you?
I do.
And, um, Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions about what I expect from you? Mr. Munees?
But what are the, what are the board's goals? I thought we were looking to, to kind of.
Well, I think what we.
The board goals and, um, that we work towards a common end?
Yes, and I think with all of us putting our thoughts together, and we, I, I don't wanna say throw them in the pot, but we will have all of them in front of us, along with, you know, the step-by-step, how, how are you gonna get there? What's it gonna cost? How are we gonna maintain it, that kind of thing? Um, then we can put all of those in a, in a, in, into the discussion, and we would prioritize them. Does that?
Well, I, yeah, that's, that's okay, um. I, I think, um, we'll probably need some, some assistance on financial figures and whatnot, and costs of operation and whatnot, if you're looking for details, if you're just looking for generalization, that's not a problem.
I, yeah, I, one of the things I don't wanna have is that, for instance, I'll use the police station as a good example, again. There's a lot of work that's already been done, there's a lot of guestimates, there's a lot of information that's already been put into that project, so the price tag may or may not be something that they're ready to discuss and put out in front of the public. Um, Mr. uh, Slavin is looking for a community center and a senior center, and from him, I'm going to expect how are you gonna build it, and how are you gonna pay for it? And how are you gonna maintain it? So when we all come back with our lists and our how, then we put them together, and we march forward, and some of us will be working independently, some of us will be working as a group, and we will hope to accomplish those goals.
Sure, it sounds like, uh, it's all right.
Sounds like what?
Uh, you know, it's, I ju- um, oh, I've kind of been working on some of them, and, and, um, I'm good, I'm good. I'll provide some information.
Yeah.
I mean, I gave you very broad things, and I thought we'd work together as a board and uh, towards a, a common end goal and result.
Mm-hmm.
Um, individually, and I think a lot of us are already working on these projects. So, I'm good.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the point, Mr. Munees, a lot of us already are working on our own want-to lists, if you will. And you mentioned earlier about communication between boards and commissions, we need to be able to communicate that, you know, building the new police station really is a, it's a number one goal, it has to be, it's outgrown, it's, you know, I think we would all agree. And, um, affordable housing is one of your um, thrusts that you have been working on regularly. Um, so, I think a lot of what we are putting together is gonna be overlapping, and we will find that out, and how we can each help each other get to where we wanna be.
Good.
Okay, thank you, so two weeks, I'll send you a memo reminding you. Uh, continue.
No doubt.
Continue discussion to recommend the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund, Article 10, do you have the numbers for that yet? Mr. Sullivan, and also the Local Initiative Program, Article 26?
Okay, so, at the last meeting, I was told that you guys had already voted that.
Yes, and we just put it back on there to make sure that the figures were correct, because there was some question about whether we had in fact done it. But we did, I know, I know. Okay, so we're all set on that, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, any other business to come before this board?
Not for me.
Nope, Mr. Munees?
I'm good right now.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum?
Nothing.
Okay, we have some minutes, oh, the town administrator's report, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, we give us some good news, Mass Hire from the Greater New Bedford Career Center is doing a 2021 Summer Youth Works Program. And, uh, we, we put it on the website today. They came by. They came by and I'll just read off some of the, some of the things. Are you a youth age fourteen to twenty one and seeking summer employment? Mass Hire Greater New Bedford Career Center is currently accepting applications. And you can visit them on their website. Please go to our website, see the link. It's rather lengthy. But it gives a specific attention Wareham applicants. All job placements will be in the town you live in. We have availability at Water Whiz, pizza shops, and maintenance positions. So if you're, if you're a youth age fourteen, twenty one, there's job availability. And frankly, we still need them for our seasonal programs through the, that the Harbor Master is running. So if you're looking for jobs, as Selectman Menes said before, we've, we've got availability. Come on out. It's, it's great experience, depending what you want to do in the future, from, from law enforcement to marine environment to anything. It's really, it's a great starting point. And you work with some incredible people. So also teaches you a little bit of adversity and dealing with some tough situations, so.
Like the one behind you right now?
Yeah. Don't get her going.
That is actually very good news about that partnership, Mr. Sullivan. I think it gives a lot of younger people opportunities to get into the workforce and in, in a fashion, you know, following something they might really like to do. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, one of the most exciting parts for, for me, just thinking about, one of the things you, you don't always get was you're trying to enter into the work program. Youth accepted into the program, complete a work readiness workshop. That ensures they know what is expected in professional work environments. During summer employment, they learn on the job skills under the supervision of their work sites, so.
That's awesome. Great. Do you have anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, so as you know, I, I've been speaking with Mr. Swenson and Nancy McHale about the, the solar and just one of the things to get, get going on there, because I know fall is right around the corner. So I just wanted to let you know, to, to get that going, my plan is to put a town administrator work group together. And there'd be representations from the conservation interest. You know, so Wareham Land Trust, definitely, potentially from the Mass Audubon. Town Land Use Interest, which is the Planning Board, ZBA Conservation Commission. Obviously, we'd be inviting them to have somebody join. Can't force anybody, but and then from the town, I would request a member from the Board of Selectmen, if whoever would be interested. And I'd like to have Jackie on board from the assessing office, as a lot of times she's working on the evaluations and can give us some pretty good insight. And then we're looking at the, the solar industry itself and see if we can't get a representative from one of the solar businesses to, to hear what's going on. And also say, would like to have a developer from the area that's, you know, landowner developer. And potentially look at, I think that's, that's a pretty good makeup. So just, just one thing with, with these sorts of groups, we'd obviously, you know, we'd put out information, posting and have it available to the, the public. It just makes it, in our short period of time, it makes it a lot easier without having official quorums and things like that to, to get something going. So you know, we would hope to have something together for fall town meeting. But I think spring special, or, yeah, the spring special town meetings really of next year is what you'd probably see a work product. So aim for the fall, but understand that our goal is to get something done. And I think we can put a pretty good group together that will, will represent the interests and you know, I'm sure I will be stealing some of Mr. Bowlen's time on this too, so.
Mr. Sullivan, I had previously discussed with you and Mr. Swenson and Ms. McHale that I would be happy to sit in on a group, you know, of that ilk if you want. But if one of the rest of you want to step into that, please feel free.
You got it as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Mr. Menes?
Sure, if you want to do that. This is a, this, no, just for clarification, this is just a working group.
Correct. There's, correct, so.
Authority to.
No, no authority to, to really do anything. You know, if there's a, if there's a new bylaw, I could, you know, it could be put forward by myself with, if the Board of Selectmen were interested, putting it on the warrant, you know, we obviously need you to, to do that. So, but this does not create an automatic thing, if that, if that makes sense, I think what you're trying to get to, Jim.
Yeah, I was just, just clarifying the point. I, I, I understood that. I was just doing a clarification and, and thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Are you all set, Mr. Sullivan? Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's been great. We have a big weekend coming up. Looks like there could be some, some rain in the forecast, but we're kicking off some of the summer celebration. I can tell you from the trash program, we have a lot of the seasonal, seasonal residents have come back home, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, liaison initiative reports, Mr. Titlebaum?
None.
Mr. Menes?
We were supposed to have a Cava Wareham Regional Refuge District meeting. Failed for a lack of a quorum. We're still looking for one more member from Wareham. I believe Cava will appoint their third member next week. I believe that's the email that I got, so. We're looking for another member for the Regional Refuge District Committee. Please consider putting an application in online for that.
Can you explain how often that meeting is held and where and when and that kind of thing? Can you give some more details?
Okay, right now, we're meeting once a month. Down to once every two months or three months. As we were basically administrative overseeing committee at this point in time, so it'd just be approving expenditures of funds. We no, no longer oversee operations of the transfer stations. As we had voted, I guess, almost a year ago, to cease operations. And as you know, we, the town of Wareham, are operating our transfer station in, in just over the border in the town of Rochester. And so it would be that. And right now, we're doing Zoom. I don't know how much longer we'll continue that or if we'll be allowed to continue it once the executive order is lifted by the governor, which is what, June, is it nineteenth or fifteenth?
Twenty nine.
Twenty ninth.
Yeah, and Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Selectman Menes, that is bringing up sort of a good point that the the governor has filed some, some legislation that some of the executive orders from the pandemic could move forward, at least for a period of time too. Because their, their, their feeling is, some of the things they've put together would be too, too hard to, to get rid of so quickly. So it looks like potentially, especially with meeting via Zoom, that could continue through September. But that's as of right now, Selectman Menes is absolutely correct. It's got a drop dead date of the, what, June, June fifteenth, I think, so.
Thank you.
Could I stop everybody for a second? Let it, show the record show that Mr. Slaven has come into the meeting at seven fifty nine.
Thank you. Mr. Menes, you were, so where is the application? Is it online, sir, or for the?
It's just a committee application.
Right, so is it online on our website?
It's, you, you're talking with me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a standard application you'd use. For some reason, we didn't, we didn't. It's a standard committee application that you'd put in. Just put in the committee you're looking for, it'd be Cava Wareham Regional Refuge District. Just selectmen appoint.
Yeah, I just was, I just want to make sure that everybody understands how and where they can do it. But thank you for the details.
Okay, and I'll get back to you in a few minutes about something else, but I'm good for right now.
Oh, we may now have a few more minutes. Mr. Slaven? We're in liaison and initiative reports, and we read your list into the record, so you don't need to speak to that.
Thank you. I think the only thing was the planning board, I think Jim also was at the meeting. I think there's like somewhere around eight more projects that are trying to get in before the deadline. If the solar bylaw passes, so they'd be grandfathered in type of thing. That's probably the only thing really that was happening, was a long, long meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business except for the minutes? No? Okay. Mr. Tropiano?
Okay, I move, let's see, everybody's here on these minutes, by the way. I move we approve the March ninth, two thousand twenty one, and the May eleventh, two thousand twenty one minutes for the regular select meetings.
Right, a second? Second, Mr. Titlebaum. Motion by Mr. Tropiano, second by Mr. Titlebaum. Any further discussion? I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Menes? Mr. Menes?
Jim frozen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum? Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Menes, you're frozen. There you are. Okay, Mr. Menes? Motion on approving those two sets of minutes? Okay, I will say aye, so it would be four zero zero. Okay, after the town meeting, which as Mr. Titlebaum said is on June twelfth, it's at eleven o'clock at the Deacon School on a Saturday. We will be meeting on June fifteenth. Mr. Menes, do you want it to be counted on the vote on the minutes? You're muted. You're muted.
Oh, done, thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
Was that for March?
The March ninth, twenty twenty one, and the May eleventh, twenty twenty one. They were both, all of us were there.
Yes, yes, on both.
Thank you, sir. As I was saying, after town meeting, we will be meeting on the fifteenth.
I got frozen out.
Yeah, you did. You're frozen again. On the fifteenth of June, we will be meeting, and then we will be going to every two weeks meetings because it's summertime, and I'm hoping that we will be busy working on our initiatives as well as getting some time off. Is there any further business to come before this body? Mr. Slaven?
He's.
I'm tired already.
Second.
Did you make a motion?
Oh, would you like a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Just did it.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second, second. Motion made by Slaven, seconded by Titlebaum. I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum? I don't see, Jim, yeah, okay. Adjourn? Can you do this if you want to adjourn? Yes? Okay. Okay, me as well. So five zero zero. Good night, Wareham, and thank you very much, gentlemen, for managing to do a lot of business in a reasonable amount of time. Good night, Wareham. Enjoy and stay safe. Enjoy your long weekend and make sure that nobody trashes the beach.